Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 8th Historic Preservation Commission special meeting for the new standards, some updates tonight. Glad you all can come, and I know we're looking forward to hopefully sending this on and getting it approved. Can everybody hear me? Wendy and Lori, can y'all hear me? Can everybody on Zoom hear me?
Yeah, saw hands being raised, so it's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
All right, so first I need to excuse three members. All right.
Yep, why don't we do a roll call?
Okay.
So Chair US.
Here.
Vice Chair Pennington has requested an excused absence, so we can do that if you'd like afterwards. One of you guys?
Here.
Okay, Christina Minkin?
Here.
Lori Ryan?
Here.
Russ Vandermaaskeeler has also requested an excused absence, as has Josh Atkins.
So we won't do that after, just let him excuse himself.
Might as well see if somebody wants to make a motion to...
Okay, so I have a motion, okay? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Jane, can we do a roll call then?
Sure, Chair US?
Yes.
Christina Minkin?
Here.
One of you guys?
Yes.
And Lori Ryan?
Yes.
There it is. All right, so I guess everybody has been able to look at the updating, because it was posted on the website. I guess, so, and we need to, the council committee members want to discuss?
We have a short presentation that the consultants and I had to supply as overview and discussion, so why don't we go ahead and just start back, and I'll go ahead and introduce Phil here. Many of you have, let me just get to this PowerPoint. Phil Walker is here tonight, and Keith Covington is on the virtual call too, so he waved his hand earlier, so both consultants are present tonight, but I'll let Phil start his presentation.
Okay, so last time I was here, I stood at the podium, and I felt kind of weird because my back was to the majority of people, so I think I will stand here if that's okay, and hopefully everybody can hear me fine. So if you want to go, and you have the control, right?
Yeah.
You want to go to the next slide. So as Jamie said, I'm Phil Walker, Keith Covington is on the Zoom as well. Other city staff here, I guess not. Michelle McCain is with the state, and she, you know, the state's really important. A lot of funding for this project came from the state, and they've been reviewing the document. And you can see the list of advisory committee members, and they're obviously really important in this whole process. Can we go to the next slide?
Sure.
The, what we'll do tonight is, I'll give you a brief project overview, and I apologize in advance for some of you who've already sat through this several times. You could probably recite it yourself, but in case anybody's new or particularly on Zoom, we'll just kind of talk, give a little bit of background. And then we'll also go over the most recent editing issues, and then we can really just go through the standards. I thought what I would do is take a look, we've expanded the table of contents, we've about doubled it, because I realized before it wasn't all that easy to navigate because we didn't go into backups detail. So we have kind of like another layer of detail. We also have hyperlinks, which is nice, so when you're, you know, I mean, the current standards, which are not bad standards, but right now there's not a table of contents at all in these, so now we not only have a table of contents, but it's pretty detailed, and you got hyperlinks. So I think, you know, one of the major goals, of course, is to make this more user-friendly, so that's good. But I thought I would just kind of go through the table of contents, and then people could, and we could go through the document, but I don't know if you might rather just be more specific about it and say, hey, regarding page B7, let's talk about this issue. So anyway, that's kind of what we'll be doing, and just have an open conversation. So we'll go to the next slide. And again, you know, what are design standards? Of course, there are regulations that are standards that give the Preservation Commission guidance on making decisions regarding alterations to existing buildings and really existing sites, because new infill development would be reviewed, we don't have that listed on there. I probably need to add it for the next version of this. Relocating the building, which of course isn't very common, but can occasionally happen. Proposed evolutions. In the enabling legislation, there are specific codes in the state, you know, state codes that allow for local historic districts. Here in Burlington, you've got provisions in the Unified Development Ordinance that are essentially your preservation ordinance. Of course, the standards have to be adopted by city council. They're applied, right now you may have two historic districts, as I'm sure you know, that are overlays, and you have five individual landmark districts. But what's important to keep in mind is that these are locally designated. That's very different from, say, national register, even though, you know, some of these are national register as well. But, you know, what really gives teeth to these districts are when they're locally designated. The Preservation Commission and staff, of course, administer the standards, and a certificate of appropriateness is required. If it's minor work, if it's deemed minor, we've got a matrix in the standards now that try to define what's major and what's minor. If it's minor, it means you can get an administrative approval by staff, and if it's major, it goes before the full commission. And so if you want to go to the next slide. So the intent of the historic overlay program, and this is directly out of the UDO, the exact line, so to promote sound normal preservation and conservation, protect, safeguard, and conserve heritage of the city and any individual properties. It goes on and on. Provide for education, pleasure, enrichment of residents and all citizens, foster civic beauty, stabilize and enhance property values, and contribute to the improvement of the general health and welfare of the city. So there are three major, I mean, there are a lot of objectives for this project, you know, going into more detail on certain issues, covering issues that maybe haven't been addressed until now, but also to modernize the standards, and a great example of modernizing is materials, right? Because there's always new materials that seem to surface, and, you know, addressing new materials, and even having provisions for materials that we don't even know, you know, don't exist now, but may appear in 10 years, I'm kind of, what are some criteria to consider whether they're acceptable or not in addition to this material matrix that we came up with? Also streamline the process, so, you know, we just talked about major applications that go before the commission, minor that go before staff, and then things that aren't, that don't require COA. The objective has been to shift things from the left to the right. In other words, try to see if there are opportunities for things that are major that could be minor, things that are minor that could be considered maintenance or no COA. But you have to be really careful doing that, you know, it's not easy to do because, you know, we still want to maintain the integrity of these districts and so forth. And, you know, one thing we were talking about earlier is just, I think as time goes on, when you start to get applications, and let's say there's something that's a minor, yet it's an issue that staff can't make a definitive, you know, a good decision on because it may not be clear enough, you know, it may be that something that we proposed for minor has to eventually, if you do like an annual update, maybe it has to move to major. And the thing about, you know, major versus minor, keep in mind that things that are considered minor that staff can decide on have to be issues where the standards are clear enough that they don't have to just make some kind of interpretation or judgment call, right? And that's why you have a Preservation Commission. And it's also, you know, keep in mind that you want flexibility in your standards. You want to have a certain amount of flexibility, but the more flexibility you have, the more the need for decisions by a society review, you know, that is the Preservation Commission, because it's not something that's necessarily going to be black and white. So anyway, we're trying to streamline the process, and I think we've definitely pushed it in that direction. And then finally, creating efficient and user-friendly standards, and I mentioned before, table standards is just one example. So here's where we are with the project, you know, it's basically four overall steps. We already did the, back in February, March, did the original kind of background work, took our first trip here on task number two. Had, and even though task two says stakeholder engagement, I mean, really, throughout the whole life of the project, there's stakeholder engagement. That was kind of our most intensive initial stab at that. We got out of the field, we had stakeholder photo screen meetings. Those were held remotely. Then we put the draft together, and now you can see where that final stretch, where we've done the meeting of city staff and the Preservation Commission, the initial one. We had a public workshop, we submitted, you know, and actually, there's been several iterations of that. We get input, we revise, we resubmit, so. And so next, we'll be going before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then the city council workshop, and then a council hearing, and then the document will be approved. But with that in mind, this shouldn't really be viewed as a living document because, like I said, as you get through the growing pains and decide, oh, is this something that you can approve administratively, or does it need to be commissioned? I think you'll want to look at it every, you know, maybe once a year, do updates. Probably not so much for the standards themselves, but more about the process, I would guess. Okay? So these are the most, some of the key issues we've been dealing with most recently. When it comes to the COA approval process, the, you know, the city thought it was really important to make a clear distinction between what's considered quasi-judicial, which is generally adhering to COAs, or what's advisory, like, you know, boundaries of a historic district or something where they're advising the city council. Design Review Committee, that is something, or we're playing around with the name of that. It may be called Design Consultation, since it's not really a formal design review. But in your UDO right now, there are provisions for the, no, it's not the UDO, it's in the...
In the current standard.
It's in the current standards, that's right, that's right. Which might require a tweak to the actual UDO, but there's this, you know, it's set up where you have this five-member body of people that are not part of the Preservation Commission, but that they can work with applicants to kind of, you know, look at their proposal and kind of help them along. And it's proposed, you know, that's not really been used, I guess it's been several years since it was used. It didn't function at one time, but what we think is important to do is kind of deactivate that group. So that's what we're looking at. Minor and major matrix, and we talked about that just a minute ago. On the actual standards, we put together a permitted materials matrix, which, you know, there are some materials that are just flat out prohibited, no matter what the context of their use. There are others that are always going to be permitted, and then there's the maybe or possible. And that just depends on, you know, is it visible for the street or not, or other, you know, is it a material that goes on a new structure, or is it an existing historic? So there are a lot of variables on what might, you know, play into the maybe part, but there's... So I think that matrix will help on that issue. We also created some new appendix sections, recommended plant material list, which the city already had, and by the way, it's really extensive, it's added probably a dozen new pages. Permitted, building permit requirements with hyperlinks to applications, and then links to... Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over it. Building permit requirements, it just kind of lays out what requirements are for building permit, and how it might or might not relate to a COA. And then finally, links to applications and other documents. And I mentioned before that the state preservation office, of course, is very involved with this whole project.
So the, also as part of this project, separate apart from Keith and Phil's draft here, staff took a look at our processes, and we prepared a process assessment. There was a couple iterations of that on the project website that we've had. But I just wanted to highlight a couple of the recommendations that we had as part of our assessment, and we're hoping that along with the design standards recommendation, that the process assessment report recommendations will also be considered by the HPC and have that kind of document move forward as a, in part. So I'll just go through them really quickly. Continued training on topics such as advisory, quasi-judicial roles, expertise communication, and potential conflicts of interest. So the HPC, for those, you know, just in background, HPC functions kind of dual roles. They're advisory in some capacity, and then they also serve as quasi-judicial in, such as advisory in this role, reviewing the local historic district standards or reviewing a landmark decision or modifications, let's say, to the overlay, the district boundaries. In other, and those types of projects, they move as advisory, and then they go to Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation, and then ultimately to city council, just like Phil explained, this process will move forward. But in their other roles, they function as a quasi-judicial board, where they hear major certificates of appropriateness, and then there's specific, you know, rules and responsibilities associated with how the applicant and the process lays out, and the type of communication or lack thereof that they can have with an applicant. So just continued training on these types of topics. There's also discussion about, and a recommendation to expand the board membership, to allow for additional members with expertise on certain, you know, aspects, architect, architectural background or structural background, building expertise. Nothing formal has been recommended at this point, but it's just a consideration. We talked about the Design Review Committee, or the Design Consultation Committee as we thought that Christina had a good suggestion on changing the name a little bit. Because really, staff's recommendation for this, which may be a little bit different on how it operated in the past, would be that the Design Review Committee, or whatever name it would be, would function as more of a role where an applicant or a property owner could get advice prior to even applying for a COA, and getting some information upfront, just on issues such as building materials or getting an application together, while staff also can serve as a function in terms of having a pre-application conference meeting, or advising an applicant that they should reach out to the Design Review Committee. These are all optional efforts. Somebody could just go in and apply for an application without either of those things. We strongly suggested having something in place that would be comprised of members at large of the community, and may even include former members of the HPC. That would avoid a conflict of interest, that would avoid having to keep minutes of the meetings and give applicants or property owners some advice upfront. Continued advertising on our website, we have done, I think, a pretty good job with this project on keeping everything open and transparent. All of the advisory committee meetings have been recorded and have been placed on the city's website. All the different drafts have been up for review. We really want to make all of the planning and historic preservation and any of our materials throughout the city really available through our website, and communicating that with applicants, and getting public input, and helping folks go through the process through our online portal, which is this work of process for applications. Phil also mentioned reviewing standards on an annual basis and providing recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council. I see there's a comment in the chat, and... Yeah, if you, I'll ask questions, or the chair can ask if anybody from the public wants to ask questions after we're done with our presentation, but at this point, we're just going to continue through. If you do want to raise your hand at some point, let us know if you want to have comments or ask questions. But, let's see, where was I? HPC, as you may know, can set public, can set special meetings on topics to assist applicants to expedite requests. We've done that in the past, I don't think anybody is opposed to continuing that approach. There's also a recommendation to have a dedicated historic preservation staff person who can assist with reviewing COAs, working with council, working with admin and staff, and the HPC to implement the goals as part of this process. And just in general, we don't have that currently, so that would certainly be a benefit. Phil also talked about the shift of different types of work, from major to minor and minor to general maintenance. A recommendation to also, HPC and staff should continue to work together to identify ways where it's logical to make things more efficient. And also a recommendation dealing with expedited processes for emergency situations, dealing with utility services or emergency tree removal. Oops. I'm not sure what happened here. So, let's see if I can get the rest of that up.
I picked it up online, but is there a way to...
Yeah. And I also have mine per copy too.
Okay.
So let me just see.
Oh, that's what we're trying to show, not the actual standards.
Yeah, it is, yeah. I think that covered... Yeah, that covered the discussion of the process assessment. And I will, I will stop sharing my screen, and I'll try to reboot that, and maybe that will reload it. So those were, so that's the recommendations in terms of the process assessment. I think we were going to then talk about the, go through the document itself. So let me stop sharing my screen and see if I can just see if any members of the HPC have questions on what we've discussed so far, maybe that's a good approach while the computer's kind of rethinking itself.
Wendy or Lori, Christina, do y'all have anything?
Make sure to unmute yourself if you're going to ready to speak. Lori or Wendy, any questions or comments so far?
I don't really.
Okay.
No, not any questions yet.
Yeah, when we read up the actual document, the standards document, I thought maybe a good starting point is just to look at the table of contents. You know, I mentioned that it expanded to two pages now because we've gone into a lot more detail. We have hyperlinks so that you can click on to, you know, whatever part of the content directly to, which is kind of a nice feature. And I thought we could just go through the table of contents and, you know, take a look at it, see if anything jogs your memory that you might want to discuss.
So let me try to reload this again and see if I can get to it, sorry. My team told me there was not going to be a problem with our network tonight because I told them that we had a meeting. So that is probably what's happening right now, because I don't have access to the server.
You know, the NBA game threes, half an hour, basically, unless you get it from TV, we'll try to get it through.
Let me try to do this, let me go to the website, I'll stop sharing here, and I can try to download it from the website that way, and we can just go through it. Bear with me for one second.
Oh, and one thing I should mention while she's doing that is, the version that's on the website, it's totally about, I can't remember the size of it, but it's a fairly small document, you know, it's compact, so you could email it and stuff, but you'll look at some of the charts, and they look a little bit fuzzy because it's a slow resolution. You know, obviously, what you opened up with ultimately will be a high-resolution version. Usually there's like two versions, there's the easy to email, like, a small one, and then there's the full one. So if you look at, if any of the graphics setup looks kind of, you know, not real good, that's the reason.
So this is a good segue, this is the project website, this is what I was talking about earlier. So this gives a really good kind of summary of...
Sure, sure.
Oh, thank you. So this is the project website, I'll go back up to the top. And hopefully the folks who are on Zoom can now see the screen that has the website up. But this gives an idea of where we have started and where we are at, with all of the links to the different recordings of the advisory committee, the kickoff meetings, and where we are tonight. And let's see, hopefully if I click on this third draft complete text, it's going to load and will take us to where we need to be.
And by the way, your own website is like head and shoulders above most communities where it comes to the amount of detail that you can access. I mean, a lot of cities just don't have nearly that much stuff to review, so it's nice, and it's there, it's well organized, you can navigate it pretty well, so that's, so you should be fortunate. Probably spoiled with the city's great website, but...
So if you want to just now read the table of contents and back to where we were before?
Yeah, so... So the introduction, I'll just kind of run through, you know, we've got that one section that I discussed in fact earlier on benefits of historic districts and landmarks. There's a piece that's kind of general, you know, sort of a nationwide perspective, and then another section on that that's very specific to Burlington. We reference the state legislation for historic zoning, the intent of the standards. The next section, the design review process, where, you know, a lot of the discussion frankly has been about the process. Talk about designation of districts and the review structure, COAs, the minor versus major matrix, and then the process for getting to the COA. The, then the historic context, you know, we talk about Burlington's historic development just in general terms, and we kind of focus in on the districts and the landmarks. We've got these diagrams, one for residential, one for commercial, one for industrial, that just kind of shows the parts of a building. And I always recommend that people look at that stuff, because when the commission's, you know, talking about an application, if you can't, you know, name the pieces, it makes the conversation a lot more difficult. So I think that's a really handy thing, you know, most design guidelines have something like that in there. So, and then finally, architectural styles and building types, and that's a pretty big section. You know, we look at, when we say building type, there's four building types. There's residential, there's commercial mixed-use, there's institutional, there's industrial. So for each of those building types, we kind of summarize the different architectural styles. And of course, some buildings, especially commercial buildings, may defy an actual style, but we get into all of that so people can kind of look at and understand. And we have, and each one is a local example as well. So, and then the next part, of course, is the design standards. We always start with Secretary of Materials standards, and so is the Marauders standards, and the kind of foundation for local governments, design standards. And then we talk about, before we get into the actual detailed standards, we talk about issues like visibility and compatibility, contributing buildings versus non-contributing buildings, the issue of material deterioration, and really just emphasizing that you always want to try to repair before you replace materials in almost any instance, unless there's just really no way to repair. And then we get into the four main sections, which are historic buildings, and you can see all, if you look at the top, they're starting with walls. You know, it's basically broken down by building component. And then you get to number two, about halfway down that second column, historic building additions. Then number three is new buildings. And we break the new buildings, some of the issues, some of the standards apply to any kind of building type, right? So general design standards. Then we get into residential buildings and commercial mixed-use, industrial buildings and institutional buildings. And you know, some of these building types, there are, I mean, there may never be any proposed infill, but there's always a possibility because of the zoning or the fact that you've already got that building type in particular district. I mean, a great examples, West Davis Fountain Place, I think there's, maybe there's one commercial building I can think of, but there it is, and you've got zoning for commercial, even if it's a very small area. Similar in Blimco as well. Similar in Blimco as well. So, then the final section with standards by kind of key issues, outbuildings and site design. And then, do you want to go to the first? And then building relocations, demolition and demolition by neglect, we get into each of those three. We have something on disaster preparedness, which is primarily a reference to a study that the state did and we have a hyperlink to that. Then we get into signage, and then finally murals, and then glossary of terms, and then document section. So, that's the overall document. So, I don't know, in going through that, are there any issues that you can think of just by looking at the contents?
Do we want to, you know, quickly just describe the matrix as well?
Yeah, the approval matrix, right?
So, let's see.
And it doesn't hurt to kind of flip through the things so people can, and I think most people have seen this, but...
And I'll just stop here and see if there's anyone on the participants list that has any questions or let me ask HPC members first, anyone have any questions so far? Okay. Wendy or Lori, do you guys have any questions? Any member of the audience have any questions?
A quick one, it's really not about the standards, but since you mentioned SmartGov and I did check a permit on it, to me, it was painful. Much more painful than anything I've ever done with the HPC. And is this saying that we're gonna go through SmartGov now for COAs?
So, I have been working with folks on the existing applications, the major and the minor. But SmartGov is also set up if somebody wants to go ahead and apply through the SmartGov portal. We definitely can make some tweaks to make it more user friendly. I think the focus had been, you know, getting the, a lot of the other building permits processed through the SmartGov portal and our TRC site plan applications. So, really the major and the minor COAs, it's kind of been a hybrid approach because so many people are used to using the hard copy application.
So, for now, we can do all?
You can do it either way, yeah.
So, is it moving to SmartGov and how long does the contract that the city has?
Everything is moving to be more user friendly and more electronic. So, we currently use the program that's called SmartGov. I don't know how long the contract is, but that is, has been a very helpful... I know for other applications, it's been a very helpful tool because a lot of our other permit types are reviewed by multiple different departments. So, it's not just planning who's reviewing building permits or technical review committee application, or technical review committee site plan applications. The COAs are a little bit different because really it's currently, you know, just one department who's reviewing it. So, that's why I've been more, not, more able to work with folks to get applications moving quicker through the process rather than pushing, just go through SmartGov because I do think that there needs to be some tweaks to it for that. But we're always, we're always looking for good and bad feedback. So, hearing that that's, was painful, we want to hear that because that is a part of what we're trying to remedy, you know, making things more streamlined, making them more user friendly. Any other questions? Okay.
So, you're gonna go major?
Yes. So, go, if you want to go right ahead and just kind of describe the intent.
Yeah, so, actually if you go to the one before, I think we kind of, yeah, we kind of give a background on the whole idea with kind of broad definitions of what a major is versus minor versus no COA. And then, and then you can go back to the chart. So, the first page is just things that are done in a public roadway, okay? And he kind of changes like street trees, maybe in a public roadway, sidewalks, that sort of thing. We've got it broken up by one, two, three, four, five categories, streets, bridges and driveways, sidewalks and bikeways, utilities and signage, landscaping, and then streetscape and similar furnishes. And we haven't really heard much discussion on that. And I think it's because, I mean, in a lot of these cases, wouldn't the app could be the city? Yeah, so, that's why you're not able to. Okay, so then the next several pages are for public and private property. And we start off, just to kind of go through the sections, structures is the first section. And we break that down by roofs and roof features, then walls and building trim, then doors and windows, we'll go to the next one. And then other building features and issues, we'll go to the next one. Then B is landscaping, and we've got, it's like eight different types of work that we're weighing in on here for major versus minor versus no COA. And then C is other site features. We'll go to the next one. Oh, okay, that's, I guess the last one. You know, the site features, so we have 30 of those actually kind of view. And then there's the flow chart.
Yeah, and this...
And that's low resolution, by the way, that's why that's the toughest one to see in all of this.
We also added again, trying to be more transparent in terms of the process, kind of this flow chart that would be helpful to folks when, kind of asking, you know, where they are in the process or what is the process for COAs or, you know, kind of general maintenance type stuff. So, this is intended to give, you know, three different categories. The first category on the left side would be if your projects fall under a normal maintenance, there's no COA required. As you move to the right, the second kind of gray area is projects that would be under minor work. And so, it just, you know, just to keep in mind that, you know, staff can review minors, but if they're not approved, then they can go to the HPC for review and consideration as well. And then, and then there's the major works that go to the HPC through the quasi judicial process, which is more outlined here, just to kind of go through the process.
So, can I ask a question, Julie? So, can you give us a synopsis on the matrices? What are the substantive, I can't say substantive, changes? In other words, what moved from major to minor? What moved from minor to no COA? Just so we have a feel, because that's kind of the big and potatoes of the whole.
Yeah, and the other thing that makes it that much trickier to follow is that we created a whole bunch of new rules. I mean, and we started with the lists currently in the standards and we thought of things that, oh, this isn't in there. Or there may have been a standard and it didn't say... For example, there may be something that's a minor, if it's not visible from the street, but if it's visible from the street, it's a major, right? So, you didn't have that kind of reciprocal, so we added those, so then it expanded.
But that's the kind of thing we need to know has changed.
Yeah, and so, and that didn't exist in many, in many instances from the old, from the current standard. So, you'll see a lot of kind of caveats with same type of language, but at the end, if not visible from the street, and I can't get over to the side of here, but if not visible from the street, that would be a minor. And then, I think it's a minor, and then if visible from the street, then, let's see, then it would be a major. So, those are...
And let me say one other thing too, and why it's so difficult to track, you know, what we had before versus now. Not only did we add a lot of new ones, we also revised a lot of them because the wording was unclear or whatever. Or we would take one and split it into two separate... So, the thing changed so much that it's really hard to kind of follow compared to what you had.
So, I guess one of my questions is, I think the way the statute reads is visible from a public roadway, if I'm not mistaken, rather than from the street.
I thought it was just from the street, and you all hardly have any alleys anyway, right?
We don't have alleys, but if there's a public, if it can be seen from a public place, that was always the existing standard.
Yeah.
So, I have a question about that. But the other thing I have a question about, if you make a major change on a structure, that's a historic structure, even if it's on the back of the structure, you're impacting potentially, whether it's contributive or non-contributive. And so, that's my concern with it getting too loose. Because if it shifts that percentage, it could impact the whole nomination.
Along the same lines, you're impacting the neighbors on either side. And in the rear, if they're in the district, our property happens to be the end of the district in the back. And when we applied for a change in windows on the back of the house, we were complying with everything, they were handmade wood windows. You know, one was being removed, it probably may not have been original to begin with, but the notices were sent to adjoining properties owners on the side, but not sent to the property owner behind us because they were not in the district. But changes to the back of a house, we use our backyard for lots of things, entertaining, for fun, for working in them, you know. And if there's a dramatic change that, from an original structure, that didn't have to go through a major and have the input at least from neighbors, it could really change the, a lot of the rear character of the houses alongside. So, I think that that's really what we're talking about is inappropriate enclosures of porches or inappropriate additions or very contemporary looking decks.
New construction, additions to a building or new accessory structure, those are all still major.
Regardless of where they are, whatever place of the house, where it is.
I guess my major...
Oh, let me just say one thing, on that whole issue of whether it's visible from the street or not, it's not as if everything that's not visible from the street suddenly becomes a minor. It's just that in some cases, depending on what the issue is, that might weigh in on a different major or minor. But it's not as if, you know, things, you know, everything that's not visible from the street just becomes a minor.
That's why I'm asking, can you tell us what the substantive changes are? Because it may not matter, but, you know, we just don't want to get to a point where we're jeopardizing the district nomination by too much change on the ballot.
So, for example, like I said, additions, new construction, new construction additions to buildings, new accessory buildings, there was no change to that. Demolition of any part of an existing structure, no change to that. Replacement of architectural details where there would be a change in the appearance of the structure, if visible from the street, we added if visible from the street. And we can talk about or look at the statute and see whether it's defined as public roadway or if visible from the street, but I think the distinction would be consistent, we wanted to be consistent. That is still major, that has not changed. Where there would be a change is if it is not visible from the street or the public roadway, if we include that distinction, that would become a minor. So, that addition has been, is something new.
So, let me just make sure I understand, so you're talking about if you make a change on the rear of the structure, that is a minor rather than a...
In terms of architectural details, but if you are building a new building addition, by default, it's gonna come to the HPC.
Right, but you're talking about historic architectural detail, that becomes a minor.
Yeah, on the back.
An issue, an issue came up at the meeting last night that I think has kind of largely slipped past this process, and that is demolition. We've got demolition here as a line item, we've got demolition by neglect, I see, and that's an improvement. But what happens when we have a building that has a fire? And there is further neglect by not dealing with the remnants? This is something, I know that, I mean, there's got to be some mechanism for remediation. And even if this, if the HPC doesn't have the authority to enforce anything, at least making the expectations known puts an increased onus on the code enforcement. So, I'm wondering if there's any consideration of that?
Yes, I mean, I think...
So, there is a rule, a section on emergency situations. So, whether it's some kind of a natural disaster or just a structural failure of a building, there are ways to expedite, that's B five.
But Phil, that's only when the owner needs, wants to come in and take care of the problem. We have the opposite situation here. We have a house that was neglected, then it burned down and unfortunately a lady died. And it's been left that way for 10 months. Now, they are just now applying for their demolition permit.
10 months later.
10 months later.
In the meantime, the neighbors are dealing with vermin, trees that have been burned beyond recognition and may ultimately imperil adjoining properties. There's a lot of things that are being left...
And it's unsecured.
To the whim of the owner, who may not have any particular interest in doing anything with it.
Right, that would seem to be just a basic fundamental codes issue outside of this.
I understand that, so if the HPC doesn't take a position on what's acceptable within a star exome, then code enforcement will have less incentive to deal with it.
But the code enforcement is where it gets dealt with, it gets dealt with through condemnation. So, the HPC doesn't even get involved in that.
I understand, but there are, the HPC does get involved in setting standards.
Yeah, I realize there's a...
It's legal, it can.
But it's still...
It's code enforcement.
It seems like you could follow the demolition...
Till then, yeah.
But the property owner doesn't, remember demolition by neglect is all about the city monitoring properties and when they seem to cross a threshold of demolition by neglect, then you have to look at that. That's not a, probably overcoming in with an application for like demolition. So, it's, I couldn't follow the demolition.
I think what you're concerned more is when it's a health and safety issue, which supers, in my opinion, supersedes the...
Jenny, I'm wondering if some, if any of these shifts were submitted to the tax credit people at the state office? Because I'm hoping we don't get in a situation where people are denying tax credits for an entire project because something was done on the bag without review.
So, the document's been submitted to the state for their review because this is part of...
I know it was submitted to the state, but do the tax credit people bother looking at it?
I don't know if they send it separately out.
Or just the matrix on the way.
I mean, if you have suggestions on who else should be taking a look at it, we're happy to involve those people if we think that we need to, but... we're happy to involve those people if we think that we need to, but...
I understand being asked to, but we could, I'd be able to have to special staff eyes on it, because the state was in a position of having denied credits to an applicant by allowing something that was inadvertently...
I know that Mitch Wilds, who is with the state, and he's the person who I've gone to for credit, for questions regarding some credits, he is...
He's in the matrix.
He is part of the review of this document, so he...
Yeah, the matrix is in the document, so they have the document, they'll go to the matrix.
I understand, I'm just not sure y'all think of it.
Who at the state?
It's Mitch, Mitch is...
Yeah, so he's been...
But maybe he didn't get it, or maybe he did.
Yeah, I mean, we're sending it to the folks that we know of, I can certainly specify to Christie, hey, make sure that Mitch did, but my understanding is they have a group of people who are reviewing the document, and you've worked with the state on several design standard updates, so...
Yeah, they had, they had a different person, I'm trying to remember his name, but anyway, yeah, because they had a lot of copies.
These are good suggestions, though, and we will definitely take them under advisement. Any other, any other comments, feedback, anyone from the public who, because we've stopped at this point, so I just want to see if there's anything in the chat, I don't see anything, anyone with their handtricks?
Hey, Jamie, it's Wendy.
Hi.
This is just a minor thing, but I noticed, the teacher in me noticed A21 has a typo. Installing floor windows.
Yeah, I found the title as well, it was one of those internal notes to ourselves, it was originally like a red font, and then it turned black, and now, it's kind of, you know, so I'm sort of like, what, so I've done a little highlighting, made notes too, so, yeah.
Let's see, I can just keep kind of flipping through, I don't, you know, the consultants have done an excellent job, I think, upgrading the standards to incorporate a lot of images, explanations for the different features of buildings, all different building types, and so this goes into the standards themselves. And visibility, context, material replacement, so this kind of, you know, goes through all of the different things that Phil highlighted at the beginning, and the gives some, each section, I don't want to speak for the consultants, but each section breaks down, you know, general maintenance, and then provides some design standards for the different types of features or types of work.
And it always goes where we start with maintenance first, those are like goalposts, and then preservation, repair, and then replacements, since that's kind of your priority, you know, you always want to start with preservation, so...
And then I know that some of you know that Glencoe has its own separate declaration of covenants, so there's separate highlights where there's specific things dealing with Glencoe, and then we also...
We will link to the CCNRs for them.
Anything else you want to, just quickly go through, and the document is about 200 pages with all of the different attachments, including now we have consistency between the UDO and the standards on some of the plant materials.
Jamie, Phil, do you have, I particularly noticed the photograph of the little blue Victorian bungalow that had the...
Solar panels.
The solar panels on the roof, and it was a corner property.
Yep, yep.
Are there any new approaches to adding solar in local historic districts that we can think about as property owners in terms of whether it's how we landscape our property? Is there an area, for instance, are people putting their panels on the ground and then creating, say, a walled garden kind of effect? I've seen the beginning now of the technology of actual roof shingles, then are the panel? And have those been used anywhere on historic buildings? Do they have the same appearance, say, as an architectural shingle, or...
Yeah, so far what we've got, and there's just the more conventional approach of saying, look, try to avoid having solar panels on a part of the building that's real visible from the street, that's the main thing, but you raise a good point, we haven't even talked about this idea of the shingles that are actually solar powered, and I don't know about solar power, solar shingles, I guess you call, and I don't know much about, I won't research about, I just made a note of that, because that's a good question, I don't know enough about them to know what they really look like and how they hold up and so forth, so...
Yeah, it's hard to...
Tesla has made something they call a solar roof, and it is adaptable to this kind of an application, it is not infinitely variable, although it's one of these things where it looks like kind of an oversized slate shingle, and quite attractive, but, you know, it is what it is, and you don't get to choose based on the reveal on the rest of the house, or whatever.
And if it looks a lot like a slate shingle, that's pretty limiting, because think about how many types of buildings slate would be appropriate.
Well, they have several finishes, but basically what I'm saying is, the exposure is the exposure, because it has that solar exposure that it needs.
Okay, yeah, we'll take a look at that and try to address it.
But we do allow solar right now, just so everyone can, some people think...
Oh, no, we do.
Solar panels.
Yes. Right, but most of our...
It's all about placement.
Yeah, it is about placement, and majority of us, either we face the, face the street to the south, or we face the street, you know, or the rear of our houses on the other side of the street face the south, but it depends upon your peaks and valleys and where they are.
And your canopy.
Yeah, and your canopy, but...
Or your neighbor's canopy.
Yeah.
Yeah, and...
Depending on how large a lot is.
Right, and have people been in any of the locally star districts in North Carolina been making applications to put their panels on the ground, similar to the power companies do, but to create a screen around it, you know, so that it isn't visible from cars passing or people on the sidewalk, but they may be visible from their neighbor's second-story bedroom windows, you know? And kind of where is there, is anybody sort of ahead of us on that?
Not that I'm aware of, but...
Anyone who's kind of on the cusp of it?
Yeah, I'm not aware of it either, but we can certainly ask...
But I think what we can do is revisit that whole section of where we talk about solar panels, and address the idea of putting them on the ground, some kind of screening around it, although in some cases that might work, and in other cases it might not, as far as the level of visibility, because like you said, if you're next door and you're looking out your window, I mean, some people might not like to see that.
Well, these are living documents, it's technology, they don't get updated, and the state historic preservation office has got to be a good source of...
And in this kind of a document, no matter what, you're not going to suit every circumstance.
Yeah, and it's not going to happen. Yeah, that's why, that's exactly why in the materials section, not only do we try to address what's appropriate, what's not, but also just kind of criteria and considering, because again, anticipating there are going to be new materials, and we don't know, you know, they don't exist now, and so when they come around, especially if it's before you can update the standards to address new materials, at least there's some questions to ask yourself or the commission when they consider those kind of materials.
So this slide just highlights the building materials that we were talking about before, the use of modern materials, and has three different categories, permitted, prohibited, and I think we had heard some feedback that maybe should be, possibly, so that it sounds nice. But this gives, you know, this is a new addition again to bringing the standards, you know, into the modern technology of things, where, you know, there may be situations where replacement of the existing kinds, materials are not available, are not as durable as some other type of more modern material, so this gives some flexibility in applications towards that. So again, you know, we're just kind of going through the different sections here, building additions, new construction, different residential and commercial types, all of the different things associated with new construction, and alterations, outbuildings. And now my house is moving slower, site design features. And the building demolished by neglect. And disaster preparedness, this is also new signage, there's a whole section on signage for various types, and murals.
Yeah, once you start regulating size, which you should do, it gets really complex, because think of how many different types of sizes, and then it's like, you know, how many could a particular property have, and what are the sizes, you know, you can't, you can't do size standards halfway, once you get into, then you're pretty detailed.
Has there been any addition to the process where anybody ever goes out to see if someone actually did it based on what they, the permit they were granted in their COA?
So there are, you know, depending upon the type of projects, and Phil kind of alluded to this, and I'll get to that section in the appendix, once somebody gets a COA, in some cases that is not the last step in their process, they may require having to go for additional building permits, or some other type of permit, so there are inspections associated with that. We don't currently have a process for somebody to just go out and inspect after there's just a general COA, we don't have the staff to be able to do that.
But if y'all weren't able to get a preservation planner on staff, then that person might be able to, because that's so important.
Additional, you know, processes down the road, but right now we don't have the ability to do that, nor is part of the process, but like I said, if there are other things that come as a result of somebody applying for a COA, like they do a building addition, the COA paperwork follows through, so they wouldn't be able to get a building permit until, for certain types of work, unless a COA, whether it's major or minor, were issued, and we're always in contact with the inspections department, they're the ones who kind of facilitate the permit processes themselves, well, they'll say, you know, was a COA issued for this project, they have all the paperwork, and we, and we're in contact with them on what needs to be done, so... This is another appendices, this was the implementation of the plant materials list, so this gives folks a good idea of what is recommended to, you know, replant when you're installing new things, and then this document here is what I was referring to, and Phil referred to earlier, where it's more intended to be a useful guide to, you know, when you need a building permit, when it's tied, and this is intended, the scope of work is intended to kind of capture, you know, our more prevalent COA applications, or what people contact us about, so, you know, when is a permit required, when is it not, different types of scopes, so this is supposed to be helpful to folks, so they know what the next steps may be. And then this is the link to the applications and other documents. I want to go back just briefly to the recommended materials list for the modern materials, because I know that there was some discussion with the advisory committee, and staff kind of felt like, maybe just to bring this up again, where there was recommended, I got to get to it, permitted, and maybe, and I think we were, we were, we were having a conversation about whether or not prohibited, that category should be eliminated, and I know that, I'm trying to get Keith's insight, because I know he chimed in when I said that during the meeting, and so, you know, Keith, I think maybe we just want to hear again, you know, kind of your insight on the pros and cons, because, you know, it's like, permitted, yes, we would like to, we think that that's a good material, that may be compatible, the maybe, or possibly, you know, there's certain circumstances that may be acceptable, prohibited, in your mind, I think I recall you saying, well, that's, you know, saying, well, we don't, we don't want those materials to be considered, but, so does that mean that if an applicant came in with those materials in all aspects, it would just not be permitted, or would they be able to apply for a major COA and, you know, make the, make an argument for something?
Yeah, okay, anyone here be okay?
Yep.
Yeah. A little soft, but...
Okay, I'll try to speak up a little bit, so, so, yes, I mean, prohibited means that as, you know, if the, if the standards are adopted, what is in the prohibited column would be prohibited until that changes, until this is revised, which is not uncommon, I mean, it happens a lot with, so many developed regulations, things come along, and new information comes available, and you change things, but yes, prohibited basically says that at this time, we don't believe that this material has proven that it has a form or, you know, style that is appropriate in historic history. So, you know, the maybe column is really more the area where we think the material, like, in general, the material is probably not appropriate, but that there are strides being made in this category to where, you know, there are so many different options, I'm going to use concrete tiles for instance, as an example, so when we look at concrete tiles, roof tiles, that means concrete roof tiles, you know, there are concrete roof tiles that do look very similar to, you know, Spanish roof tiles, or, you know, your storey wood tiles, and in that situation, you know, you would want to open the door to that, but there are also a lot of concrete tiles, more, probably more than not, that are not appropriate in historic histories, and so that's why you would need, so in my perspective, or from my perspective, I should say, I feel like that, at this point in time, the prohibited is, they're not going far enough, the material is not going far enough to say this is something that could be used. Have I researched every single material in this list, and every single option that's out there? Absolutely not, that's virtually impossible, but just based on like general knowledge, so the thing is, the way I would look at it is, if someone, now, again, this is not necessarily going to be something that happens, you know, in a relatively short... not necessarily going to be something that happens, you know, in relatively short amount, but if something comes along, you know, if a material comes along, and it, and it seems like it might be appropriate, then I think the right thing to do is to then, you know, go back to the, the design guidelines and change that from prohibited to maybe.
Yeah, let me just add one other thing on this issue, you know, in theory, you can eliminate the whole column from prohibited, and just say, look, it's either permitted or it's a maybe, if you don't see it on there, then it means it's prohibited. I think it's important, though, to specifically point out, because someone's going to go, well, did you even think about vinyl siding? That's not an example, but there may be something where they're trying to put it back on the city, like, did you think of this? And we want, I think it's good to take the initiative and say, yes, we thought about this, and we don't think it's appropriate in any, any circumstance.
So, can I?
Yes.
So, the only thing is, prohibited is clear, like you're saying, that's clear, and I wait, I think the way it's been handled in the past is if somebody brought in, like Keith is talking about, a concrete tile and one of their rooftops, and showed that they are very similar, it was dealt with in the findings of fact as a one-off.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think there's still a way to deal with that until the whole category gets enough to get moved. Does that make sense?
I mean, it sounds like it might be a maybe.
Well, I think, I mean, if we face the concrete tiles, I think we, I think we change that to maybe.
Uh, concrete tiles.
Like the other one.
It's a, it's a maybe, yeah.
And I think originally you had prohibited.
Yeah, you're right. And I think it's because it was prohibited, well, they didn't have a matrix of it, you don't have a material matrix, yeah, I don't know, we, we just did.
But, but my point being, if there's a situation where there is a one-time, you know, here's, here's the new material, here's the original material, and they look alike.
Yeah.
The way to deal with that with the commission is through a one-time exception, through the findings of fact, I think.
Yeah.
Yes, there's some.
I, I would say, though, I would say this, sorry to interrupt, but I would say this, that, like, there is the risk that once you approve it, you're setting a precedent, at least that's been my, you know, kind of experience in general, not just with historic districts, but across the board, so I think you have to think about that. I mean, we certainly, as Phil said, we could certainly get rid of the prohibited column, and put everything that's impervasive in a maybe column, but, you know, there are, I, I feel like there are still certain materials, such as a modern vinyl window, for example, that is designed in such a way that it sits flush with the outside facade, in some cases it comes out with its, you know, metal fin and everything else, and, and you end up, you end up with a very special episode for you today, we're going to talk a little bit of mid-basketball breaking news today.
I didn't say that.
So, in addition to mid-basketball, you know, I, I just, I guess what I'm saying is that I think the, the bottom line is, is that I think there are still some materials, vinyl siding is a good example, and, I mean, all the respect to the vinyl siding institute, and all, you know, vinyl siding manufacturers out there, that, you know, I, I have not seen enough personally, and this is just a personal opinion, I have not seen enough to, to, to consider that even a maybe. But, all that being aside, if, if, if Historic Preservation Commission in the City of Burlington, you know, wants that flexibility to address a particular issue, just like, I'm sorry, whoever it was that said that, you know, when a material comes in, and it is, you know, in the prohibited list, but it's exactly like what the original material is, then, you know, I mean, I'm all for eliminating the prohibited column, and just making it maybe, and just putting it all back to the historic preservation commission.
It, it seems like that could create a lot more work, though, for the commission and for staff to have to do that, and let me give an example, let, let me give, oh, sorry, under doors and windows, we've got vinyl is prohibited, vinyl clad wood is a maybe, just to give you one example. But, but I think, I think it's important to keep the prohibited, because again, there are certain materials that in any circumstance, we don't think should be in there, and again, you don't want people to say, oh, you probably didn't think of this material, or whatever, and, and again, if we take, if you shifted all that stuff over to maybe, that just creates a lot more work in this.
And just, and just to be clear, and not to get into the weeds too much here, but, you know, but, but the, the idea of a vinyl window being prohibited, and a vinyl clad window being maybe, is, A, is based on other communities that we look at, but, two, also that a vinyl clad window tends to be one that has a, a profile more similar to a historic structure than your typical vinyl window, that I know, if you call it one, you know the difference between that and an historic window. And, and so, so, I mean, you know, I, you know, to Phil's point, I think there are some materials that just are not there anymore. But at the same time, you know, this is not, and I, and I said this earlier, you know, I mean, this is not completely set in stone, I mean, zoning ordinances change all the time, there's no reason why historic district guidelines cannot change as well when new information comes to life. Does that, does that have an impact on a, you know, particular project that's trying to go through the process? Yes, it probably doesn't bode well for them, but if, if that warrants a change, it can end up, so, I, I, I'm, I'm really kind of, I can see both sides of the equation.
How about using the term instead of prohibited, not desirable?
So, okay, so what is the difference between not desirable and maybe?
Yeah, I think it gets really.
It's pretty close.
It is, it's, it's, it's this, I mean, prohibited, and it's, it's a nicer way, I think, of saying prohibited.
So it leaves the door open a little bit for maybe it be.
So it's maybe.
Yeah, it does, and if you're, if you're going, if you, if you're going to leave the door open, and again, I completely see the, the reasoning behind that, I think you could just say it's a maybe, and, and put it, I mean, as Phil said, it may be more work for the Historic Preservation Commission, because they make the call on it, but I think also, it does put the responsibility on the applicant to prove why the, the alternative material that they're choosing, the maybe material, is, is appropriate, so it's kind of, I mean, it kind of puts the, the weight on both, both.
And that applies with any kind of application, any issue, the burden of proof, so to speak, is always on the applicant's side.
True, true.
Don't we have, don't we say somewhere in the document that it is the discretion of the HPC, that these are here for, you know, informational and, and guidance purposes, but it's still at the discretion of the HPC?
Yeah, I don't know if there's a statement like that, but if not, maybe there should be, you know, I think, I think it's back to the UDO, right?
Because you don't want to be in a position of, of waiting to change something that, you know, should be allowed or disallowed.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's, I think that's also something that has to be considered, too, that while there is, you know, flexibility to change the standards, if there is the intent to do that, that's another, that's another timeline.
And so, the HPC really is intended to have a discretion, and the HPC's job is to follow the standards, the, the intent of the standards, and this is just part of the letter of the standards, the intent has to be followed by the HPC, and with that stated, then prohibited, I think, works, because it makes a distinction between the materials in the prohibited column, which are way less desirable than the maybes, as a general rule.
I, I think it needs to stay prohibited, too, it's, it's, it's not exactly zoning, but it is zoning overlay, and there's all kinds of stuff in zoning, where, you know, hot, a cold, you know, a tap-on, not a tube wiring is not permitted, there's all kinds of, that's what inspections is all about, is building code, and it's just full of, you know, you can't do that, no-nos. Before we move away, I'd love me to cut off this good conversation, I was studying the list on my phone, what's the, what's the difference between a three-tab shingle, shingle and an asphalt shingle? I think that's not a good.
Yeah, I have an idea, Keith, is that one you can answer?
Yeah, three-tab shingle is the old, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, please.
Three-tab shingle is the old-fashioned shingle that you put down, there's three tabs, it spans three feet, and you put that on, the other, the architectural shingle doesn't have that, it, it looks more like a, a shake roof.
Right.
It's thicker.
No, they're all asphalt.
Yeah, they're all asphalt.
My point is, you need to, three-tab shingles are on most of the houses in the district today, and have been allowed, we need to take, we need to make that to permitted.
Oh, okay.
A standard three-tab shingle is the 90% of what's on the houses in all of Burlington and the district. It's on our old house, it's on the, they put a new one on the neighbor's house, all the houses have three, except the, the final ones with the slate or the metal or whatever.
Okay, that, I mean, that's interesting, I mean, in, in some of my research, and again, this is, you know, not exhaustive, I didn't look at any historic districts, it's on the standards, but the three-tab is usually not permitted in historic districts, but, I mean, again, if, 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 you know, the, the committee and Historic Preservation Commission feels like we need to change that, we can certainly.
Keith, what, what is the, what, is there another asphalt type of shingle on the houses in those other districts, or are this, these districts with?
I think it's, I think, well, I think the difference is, and maybe it's a known claim to thing, is the, it's three-tab shingle versus really an architectural asphalt shingle, which an architectural asphalt shingle tends to be heavier than a, than a three-tab, it gives a thicker look.
That's all true, and I think, yeah, I think that if you look back in the history of those three-tab shingles, you will find out that they are the roofing equivalent of vinyl siding, they were a cheaper way to put a roof on there, and it lasts for over 15 years, and that's it, but.
Yeah, I, I do think most of the houses don't have architectural, they have.
I agree with you.
They have a quality, they make various, you know, eighty, eighty, thirty, or twenty, or fifteen-year three-tab houses, so, we should drive around, and if we see, if I'm wrong, we'll let you know, but I think three-tab shingles need to be, I mean, that's, they're practical, they have a higher quality available.
And they're more affordable.
So, back to this issue on can the commission deviate from the standards, you know, what I'm thinking is, if you look at page B2, that, that's the process part.
What page is that?
It's B2, or 22 in the PDA, well, no, I'm sorry, it's not 22, is that correct?
But they wouldn't be deviating.
But it's B2.
They would be identifying cases where, where they would be applying the true standards, they would be deviating from the intent of the standards.
So, you know, well, let's figure out, we can work some, to, to, to work for everybody, but my point was to say, if you go to B2, somewhere in there under Preservation Commission, I think we could make a statement saying that the commission has the flexibility to, what's the other word for deviate, to.
I would say they would make, if they would have discretion to make, regardless of the matrix identifications, the HPC's overall job is to use their best discretion to enforce the intent of the standards in the district.
Well, I mean, that could be part of, I mean, if we use the word, let's just say we use the word deviate from the standards, you know, what I was going to say is, so long as the rationale is stated as part of the approval, and maybe we could say, and the intent of the standards is still followed, or something to that.
Do you see, I'm, I'm sorry if I miss this somewhere, but with the building materials matrix, does anything in the maybe or prohibited categories automatically go to HPC? Like, I'm wondering about the overlap between the building materials and the major minor of COA, because if.
If it's part of a major, I think if it's, if it's part of a major, major application, a major COA, it certainly would come to you.
Yeah.
If it's part of, the way that I read the page 102 on my version, so, if it's part of a COA application for minor work, and they fall under permitted, then those materials can be approved administratively by staff.
I mean, it's possible that even a maybe could, if there's some kind of, I mean, if the guidelines are clear enough with regard to that material, that you could make, comfortably make a decision, otherwise you could keep it up to the commission.
I mean, you know, keep in mind that this idea is so brand-new, we have not had any experience, any, you know, this is really an idea that I think we threw as a consultants to say, we want there to be the use of modern materials, because it's been a concern that we have heard from residents, from applicants, and so, it's really, really hard to say what is recommended, what is maybe, what is prohibited, you know, I think staff is kind of like, this, moving in this direction is so positive, that we want there to be as much flexibility and discretion should be made when the applications, you know, come in, I wonder if it just should be all that maybe, because we really, we really don't have, you know, because this is a new, new concept, so.
So, 20 years on the commission, the way it was handled in the past, and this is a question for David, to ask the city attorney, the way it was handled in the past with a quasi-judicial hearing, if there was, for instance, let's go back to the cement tiles, if somebody came with cement tiles and they were identical, it was done through the findings of fact, and it was done as a finding of fact, although the standards state this, because of these issues, this has been approved, so there was a way to do it without having to say anywhere that you can do it legally.
And that's what I was, and that's what I was saying with the sentence I was trying to put together, would say that so long as the commission states the rationale in approving something that may deviate from the standards as written.
Okay, but that takes it entirely out of the hands of the staff.
But, yeah, that's where my question was coming from, like, if it's something that's going to go through as a minor, or no stay-away, then we never, then we don't have the opportunity to raise an offer about the scratch.
Yeah, I think in almost any scenario, if, if there's an issue that staff is looking at for administrative approval, and there's not a clear and obvious answer based on the standards, it needs always go to the commission.
And, and you're standing, the, the commission is standing instead of a judge, and judges rule every single day.
It's more of a jury.
Based on their experience, and, and the case law, and, and precedent that's brought before them by the two parties, and as long as they are putting on the record, meaning that you're stating the fact, and applying the, the spirit of the standard, then, and that's, and giving their outcome, you know, the commission is acting as, as a judge appropriately. Someone could appeal that, saying they don't like that you gave their neighbors the approval to put these concrete tile roof, you know, tiles. to put these concrete tile, you know, tiles on their roof, but at least you've made a record of why you approved it, and cited where in the standards you found enough backing to do it. So, you know, that's, that's the way, you know, you should write it up, unless you want to be so hard-nosed, that if it doesn't say specifically, you can always use a concrete roof tile. You're not going to be willing to approve it, no matter what. You know, it's really how the commission and the commissioners view their role.
I would add to that, it's also the training opportunities, they think, and have, because I, I completely hear what you're saying, and one concern I have is that, having spent some time in the commission, sometimes those details on the inclusion of exceptions, to use a general term, do not end up in the findings of fact, which is when we get into a problem with precedent, and then like, everything's really nice. So, I fully embrace flexibility, and people bringing in materials and all of that, my concern is that it just...
Right, that you don't have a record of, you don't have a transcript and a record of how you came about that decision, and that is really important.
And why it's distinct from others might have made or might make in the future.
Right.
It's also important that the staff, you know, every month submits the administrative approvals to the commission, the commission to review, and so the commission is comfortable with the kind of decisions that are being made by staff, because, you know, that way obviously, if they start to see in a pattern where, hey, we don't agree with that, then you might need to revisit, it may be revising the matrix and making something a major instead of a minor, because, you know, you think this type of issue needs to go to full commission.
What about just adding language under prohibited that says something like, unless there's rare or unique circumstances that are presented, so that there's not a complete out, but you've got some...
Because your definition right there on the screen, asphalt prohibitive, really precludes the commission from doing anything with it.
Right, and I don't think that that's the, I mean, wasn't the intent, no.
Let's revert to the discretion thing, yeah.
So, are you, let's see if the commission, you're in favor of adding some language to provide some, okay.
Yeah.
Yep. I thought that's what we were all trying to do, but I think I got lost somewhere with that. All right.
Well, and Jamie, I would, I told you, with some of this, especially when it comes to what we can do, I would feel comfortable if, you know, help can kind of, like, just over in the right thing, because I don't wanna...
Yeah, I mean, he has definitely reviewed this document, and a lot of the changes in terms of the design review committee and the procedural stuff, so we will definitely have him revisit that.
I would just, I would feel better, just so we're, you know, kind of just...
On the other hand, I mean, you know, if you're looking at this from a slippery slope type of thing, you can end up with everything being exceptions, and, you know, or everybody trying to bring exceptions to the commission, and that becomes cumbersome.
It's almost like a variance or something, when you think about in a planning commission context, it's like, look, you have to make your case, and you have to meet these criteria to get this variance for...
And maybe that's, maybe that's what has to be defined.
But it's not, because it's quasi-judicial, so it's less of a...
Right, and the part of the group is always gonna be on the applicant to present their case, and justify, and, you know, and that's why we're hoping that the design review committee, or whatever it's called, can assist with that process for an applicant, or there's additional resources available to that. We don't want somebody to just come in, you know, open-ended, especially if they're throwing something out there that's...
That's the situation you're in now. I mean, what I'm saying is, you don't have, you don't have that staff yet.
Well, the other thing is, you don't want it to loosen up, that it takes a tremendous amount of staff time.
Exactly.
Telling people that, well, yeah, too much confusion.
All right, I think, I think we got to a good place there.
But it's good, it's good that there's a lot of feedback.
Yes, absolutely. I think before, so not to monkey the waters too much, but I will, because that's my job. So, the one other thing that I wanted to just go back to revisiting is, and I'm gonna see if this will now get back up to, let's see, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and see if I can go back to the PowerPoint, because staff had made some minor changes, and there was a lot of discussion about, let's see, landscaping from the last meeting, and is it this version, I don't know?
That blue box that you just passed was really to the point on this.
And I have to go back through, so just bear with me for one second, but there was a lot of, there was a lot of discussion about major, minor landscaping, what do those different things mean, and so we tried to, we tried to clarify that a little bit, and so hopefully this will be loaded again. If not, I've got handouts for it, and it was on a slide that was after your, and I'll have to share my screen again, I know.
So, it's on landscaping, like, B four, B one to B seven, it looks like?
So, so this is, this is the last thing that I wanted to bring up, just in terms of, again, staff's recommendation, which may be a little bit different than what we talked about for the advisory committee, because there was discussion about, what is, and at the top is the existing recommendations under B one through seven. What is minor landscaping, pruning alterations, how is that defined? Where, we just eliminated the word minor, and so we have suggested, and you can see the categories on the bottom, to the right, major, minor, general maintenance. So, landscaping, pruning, alterations, including vegetable and flower garden, shrubbery, installation of weary yard trees. General maintenance, including the addition or removal of individual plants, that's different than, replacement must be with other species on the recommended plant list. So, we're suggesting that that all fall under general maintenance. Removal of dead, diseased trees, also under general maintenance. And that is, we often utilize Jason Barnhill as the city artist to help make that determination, it's not just a subjective thing, but landscape changes, not visible from the street, including demolition of any part of any existing landscape feature that would fall under minor. In our opinion, that's gonna be tied to when there is a patio, when there is a building expansion, an alteration, it's not just gonna be somebody, most of the time, you know, putting in a pool, things like that, it's gonna be tied to an application that is either gonna be under a minor or a major. Redesign and installation of entire landscaping that's visible from the street, major, and then the staff is still, we brought this up at the advisory committee, meaning to removal of the healthy trees, if replaced by another tree on the recommended plant list, minor, and if not replaced by another tree, that would fall under major. So, we were just trying to provide, I don't think our change, our recommendations were all that different, but just trying to provide some clarity there.
It's really important, because when we had those written initially, like you're showing at the top, we knew it was problematic to use a word like minor landscaping changes major, but, you know, what does that mean exactly? What's the threshold between minor and major? So, I think it's good to get rid of that kind of language that you really can't define, and try to just have more descriptive, straightforward, you know, words, so...
So, I have one question. The removal of a healthy tree replaced by another tree on the recommended plant list, so that means somebody could come in and cut down a hundred-year-old tree, or just arbitrarily, as long as they planted a sapling?
That's right, there's not a distinction in the, in the size, diameter, or caliber.
Now, in Glenco, the C C and R is probably, they've got like a minimum of like fifteen-inch caliber or something.
Right, right. I mean, it seems to me that that's pretty arbitrary and pretty random, because, and the reason I say that is, the character of like the Davis Street, Front Street District is those large trees, and if you start allowing those to be cut down without any input, you very soon start to lose the character of the neighborhood, potentially.
That's a very dramatic change.
Yeah.
I mean, the rest of the landscaping doesn't matter, but the trees matter.
We've had a four-inch caliber.
Well, four inches is too big.
Yes.
I mean, if you, if you look at the standards, the recommendations in the standards, so you can go to the, to the standards as guidance, right? If I understand this correctly.
Yeah.
Mature healthy trees, sugar made, intact, and undisturbed on the site, unless they're calling, causing structural deterioration, and what, and how that's defined. So, we're saying, yes, the intent is to keep them on the property, however, if you are going to remove them, they need to be replaced by another tree that's on the recommended list, and that would be something that would be reviewed by staff.
I think my issue is that that should be major, because that should be reviewed by the commission, because, I mean, the rest of the landscaping doesn't matter, that's changed over time. Those trees are the character of the neighborhood, they are the historic character of the neighborhood. I mean, that's just my, my opinion.
You know, I tend to agree with you, but I also, I also see the other side of this now. We have a tree on our property. This is a tree with essentially a six-foot caliber.
Okay.
It's six feet in diameter, it's a huge willow, but the tree is slowly tipping towards the house, and the roots, the roots are lifting out of the far side.
We took ours down, it was that size. We took it down after we had the city.
But to continue the thought, you know, all of these trees, these huge old trees that really do define the character of the neighborhood, all of these trees are reaching the ends of their lives, and at some point, you have to put in new growth, so that down the road, there will be something to take over. I mean, there's, there's gotta be a cycling through this.
Right, but do you invite general permission to cut them down about a year?
No, not, not at all. And I'm looking, I'm looking for, because I'm looking for ways right now to try and find this, to find a way to mechanically save that, truly, you know, if we can.
In, in the last advisory, there was a lot of discuss, I asked a lot of questions about that, and I, I think strongly that whatever the caliber is, if it's fifteen inches, maybe consisting of Glenco, but that, that there needs to be a caliber, and it needs to be major, and there's a lot of discussion about diseased trees, that sort of thing, and I had, I shared that I had a lot of experience with applications, we brought up the city art risk for multiple trees on our properties in the district, and if they showed, you know, the art risk was always on the side of safety, if they showed any disease, or they, you know, maybe you're getting too big, damaging the foundation, whatever it was, they always approved removal, but we still really strongly need it to be a major to take over, to take down over whatever the caliber is. It needs to go, you know, because they are, it takes a hundred years to get the tree.
Yep.
And when the day comes that we do have to take that tree down, it is really sad, but, and we'll replace it with whatever is recommended, but I think we should have to come and ask. And I think we, if we, I think the district should go to fifteen inches, the same as Glenco or ten. I mean, four inches is nothing. I mean, I've got trees that are four inches that I planted four years ago, I mean, come on.
Yeah, in one draft of this, we went to fifteen inches for anywhere.
Right.
But then, the consensus, I think from the advisory committee was just to get rid of...
It was not the advisory committee, it was city staff, it was city staff, and the staff spoke about it at the last call, and it's coming from the...
I mean, we were still worried about it on the committee, because it's an implication to really lose a lot of a district that can't be remunerated.
I, the, my understanding, based on what I've heard in the meetings from the beginning, the push to change the tree, to be able to take a large tree, it started with one or both of the applicants who were highly in the district. That's what I saw, that's what I heard, and I understand the city staff trying to give into that, but nationally, large trees, you know, until they're disease, you try to save them in the district.
I guess that's the other piece of this, is it's consistent with other state, across the state, and nationally, it's a consistent tenet, is to save old, large trees in a district, because they contribute to the historic character.
I mean, we've been looking at that tree from, from our property, it's in, it's in the back of the property, and we've been looking at that, and we both agree that it will be tragic if that tree goes, because it creates a backdrop for the whole house, you know, and it...
But trees are proved to be completely mixed. I had one mixed in my yard, for good reason, it was a big one, and it was sad, but it was a problem tree.
But there are people who just consider trees to be a problem, and they'll take them all down.
So, just, just you want to recognize, there's somebody on the Zoom call that has a question, has a hand raised, so...
Who's?
So, if you want to recognize, Vaughn?
Okay, Vaughn.
I might have done you her.
Yes, the point about trees, I'm listening to what everybody's saying, from what I've come to learn, I was educated about, was that approximately eighty years ago, people take, there was a tree salesman, he came up from down West Gate Street, he sold a lot of these trees that we see on our, on the block today, on that district today. And so, that kind, that sale of all of these purchases of these trees kind of created that landscape, and so the other truth is, what should we do to the future? And, you know, that pattern created this dynamic that we have today, and it is also creating the dynamic of trees that are aging, it's time for them to go. But I think there's often these people's sides, but maybe this is something that needs to be a separate conversation, to have a discussion about what is the best thing for the trees, because some trees are planted in great locations, some trees are planted where they're creating rustiness, sidewalks, or rations, or they're not in the best place. So, maybe a side of conversation towards what should the future of the trees in the historic district look like, and based upon the way we live today, what's the best location to have a tree, and that is separate from the future, that's what I want to say.
I think the standards themselves are helpful in beginning that conversation and giving staff and HPCs some guidelines around like, what is appropriate or possibly inappropriate in terms of taking trees down, I'm not sure if they're putting them up, but you know, taking them down. I think for me, the B two, which I think should be parsed out from the permit, so that was a really smart move. One concern for me holistically, in my comments that isn't a Jamie, and I think people in the copy of, but this is a good example, is that if there's no COA in this, in this particular case, if we make out a disease, there's no proven proof on the applicant, you can just say it's dead, or maybe it's healthier, maybe, you know, who knows? And I hate to be so suspicious, as it were, of people in our community, but at least, I feel like that one, I believe should be minor, so that staff can, so that we know that, that, is it Jason Barnhill, is going out, and that there is some conversation around it. And again, that's another bridge for HPC and staff and the community. I just have a real concern over, well, it was, it was dead of disease, so I took it down, and nobody, nobody knows, and you don't have staff, very unfortunately, to be out there checking, right? Nor, nor should we feel like we need to police our neighbors, I feel. I feel like one of the intents or hopes for me with the standards revision is that it would create a more sense of community and embracing of the district, in ways that are feasible and manageable, and bringing people together, instead of this like suspicious and like calling out this neighbor, and that kind of thing, that's another ground. But I just, yeah, I think, my big concern is that anybody can... But I just, yeah, I think, my big concern is that anybody can say there's dead disease, take it out, and it could really fall anywhere in there.
Yeah, I think that makes total sense. And, and of course, I don't know if we referenced arborists or not in here, but that person is hugely important to all this stuff.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Jamie, we, we talked about this at the, at the last meeting a lot. And I think it's, I think, you know, I know there's pressure from the city council and staff to take, to allow large trees taken down without, without being approved. Um, I think it's important to get a consensus of the, the, first, the district commission and the committee consultants that appear. Is there anyone who just, do we all agree that it's important and at least go on record? You know, I suspect we're gonna get overruled. And I'm sorry I didn't get consensus on the last call, but.
No, I mean, and, and it's fine. I mean, staff can have certain recommendations. The HBC can have recommendations. It's not as a matter of, and ultimately, as you know, this item will move forward to the planning and zoning commission. There will be opportunities for additional public comment and feedback at that process. And then the same thing with city council. So, um, you know, this is not the end of the line in terms of comments and feedback.
I just wanted to be clear that if there isn't consensus, that this one's important, at least in my mind, my two stats. And if anybody cares to know, you know, I'd like to, to have that, to be clear so that if it does come up as zoning or city council, or what did the, what did the, what did the, the committee, or what did the district commission think? And well, some thought this and some thought that, well, I think this one's probably gonna fall on, that it should be regularly more. It should be hard to take down critical trees in this particular case.
There is no other protection for trees in the city, right?
There is the appearance commission, so they do review trees that are going. I think Jason would be better to speak about it, but it's the trees that are in the right of way that, that have to be reviewed. So there is, there is additional oversight.
That's all the right of way.
Correct.
But not up by the property?
Not up by the property.
Right, we don't have any other tree removal permit process.
You know, a lot of communities do have a tree preservation ordinance. That's not rare at all. They're not the only ones.
I lived in cities that did, and it was, it was accepted.
And that's separate from a preservation commission or a store that's, you know, a tree preservation.
The commission didn't have to consider.
I think there's also, I, I don't wanna speak for our other consultant, Chad Meadows, who does our UVO stuff, but there's, he follows a lot of legislation.
Tenure laws.
Yeah, so it's, it's hard. It's a hard, it's a hard topic. It's not, it's very cut and dry. But I, I mean, I hear everybody's comments, and I appreciate it.
But I think we have a finite, we have a, we have a very finite district here. And.
So I think what they're looking for is, is feedback from anyone else, consensus on, on this, on this issue. If anybody else has comments, anyone from the HBC or, or on the members of the call. I just wanna make sure that everybody has the opportunity to speak. Okay. I'm not seeing any hands raised.
None of them are, none of them are on the trees. So, none of the trees. But I would hope I go with Tom himself as well.
So is the commission, I, I guess I'm just trying to gauge what the commission's feedback is on this. I, um, staff has one recommend, recommendation is, and I'm hearing that the advisory committee has, or people from advisory committee, members of the public have another, uh, recommendation potentially. But, you know, in order to move this along, we need to, um, you know, kind of finalize or summarize what the, what the HBC is gonna be feeling. So I guess the first question is, um, you know, are we feeling comfortable of having a discussion about items that either HBC wants to have some feedback on? Or is HBC feeling good with staff's recommendations on items and moving that along? I don't wanna speak for anyone. You know, I want you guys all to have the opportunity.
I would, I'm sorry.
Okay, here you go.
I was gonna say that I think that B2 should move to at least minor. And five and six, which may actually be six and seven, I think.
Right.
Um, should both be major. So I see that if they're moved, I'll do without replanting another is major. But I would not be, removing healthy trees, if replaced by another tree under recommended, that has to be major.
Okay. I agree.
And I usually, and I trust staff's judgment. I've never really had it since though. But I, you know, I, I agree with Christina. Um, and yes, trees are very important. So I'm, I'm.
Was that Wendy who said agree or Lori?
It was Wendy.
Okay. Lori, you have any comments?
No.
Are there any other, again, not trying to move this along, but we're at nine o'clock. So, we are moving along.
I mean, I think.
Are there any other topics, exceptions that the HBC wants to discuss in terms of modifications? Or clarifications on things?
I don't.
I think it looks, I think it looks good. I mean, I know, and there's still, you said there's still opportunity to adjust things, like if it leaves us and goes to plan. So it's not set in stone, and that's actually a good thing. I know, because I think they look good, and there is some questionable stuff. But I think that can also, there's still a chance to be addressed. It doesn't have to be, it's not gonna be set in stone whether we, once, once it goes to them. Because that's what I'm trying to say.
I guess from this, I don't know, I feel like HBC, a lot of the advisory committee are the spaces where the preservation-based questions, right, are kind of, I think, kind of concerning. And other will have other kind of characteristics of questions. Um, so I would just offer, again, what I shared over email would be A26, A34, and A39.
Let, let's go to those, just so everybody, because I'm, I'm not sure that everybody. And so A26.
Um, that to me should be major. And part of that, so part of this echoes, I think, on the conversations or not, the community members and advisory committee members sharing earlier. Um, and the visibility diagram and the guideline in the standards revision is really helpful. So thank you for that, and thank you, Dorothy, for everything you've done to give us so much to talk about. And so much to not talk about, actually, right? We've really focused on a couple of things throughout this process. Um, but it seems to me that the, the, maybe the, it is public, or whatever the other language is, but it's a little, it feels a little bit wishy and many of these properties have very deep lots. And so Front Street means, you can see our house on three sides, from Front Street or from Davis behind it. So that's one concern. Like, what does that actually mean? And then, what are the implications of that for the historicity and the preservation of the structure? Um, so my, the other concern I have about, I think, A39.
So it's eight, I'm sorry, so A26, you're recom, A.
Major.
A26, you're recommending major.
So that it's consistent between visible and not visible from a street. Um, and the same thing, the same principle of reverence for maybe, maybe not. Um, A39, I think it was.
That's the replacement of architectural details. We talked about that one earlier.
Like, there will be a cha, I mean, that for me is also a really big piece, right? There will be a change in the appearance of the structure. So maybe it's not at the level of a depth or addition or something massive, but a chain, a chain type is visible easily, especially from almost any place you can work in, never mind what you're doing to the integrity of the structure. And then, the last one I really had, I think, was A34. Replacing a masonry foundation. My sense is that it should be.
The repairing or replacing masonry foundations, installing foundation fans or replacing wood-based indoors?
It's really replacing masonry foundations, because I have a question about scope and scale there. Like, are you, and I didn't go back to the actual standards, so my, my.
So what, what's your concern?
That it should, if you're, like, are you replacing the entire foundation? Are you changing something integral to the structure? Um, and if you are, then at the very least, it should be minor, more likely major. So just not knowing exactly what that entailed or involved, or based on the one line of, of the matrix in terms of that one. Because I'm also envisioning somebody picking this up and looking at this very wonderful matrix and saying, oh, great, I can just do this thing. I don't have to talk to anybody. Um, but if you're replacing your entire foundation, which is what that seems to allow, because again, not everybody using these is well-versed in language of architecture or conservation or anything. Um, we end up with a, with a problem. And they probably end up with a problem. It depends on being a compromise structure of their house.
And I think that.
So is, is your suggestion, is your suggestion then to separate out the masonry foundation from
Replacing masonry.
And replacing it would be, um, major or minor?
Yeah.
Which one?
I don't know that I would feel particularly bad about it, so I'd say major or minor on that one. I think minor would be fine, but I don't think.
So just take all of A34, make it minor, right?
Or just parse out replacing masonry foundations. Repair should be listed, like, that, whatever. I mean, I think, hopefully, people are prudent about materials and all those other things. But if there's one that I'm really concerned about, it's replacing.
Well, then I guess it also depends, what, once you, if a replacement, what if it's 50% replacement versus all full replacement? I mean, there's degrees of replacement too, right?
And replacing it with what? Are you changing?
With another foundation.
But if it was all brick and now you want some in block? I mean.
Well, the standards actually address that.
The standard, you know, any one of the tiers could be, we're just talking about which type of application it would fall under.
Yeah.
The next concern is if it's no COA, then you can replace whatever with whatever. You don't even, you don't even seem to look necessarily.
It's like a tree thing.
So replacing masonry foundations would be by itself as a minor? Okay.
Okay.
And then A26 and A39, those were, um.
Those to me should be major.
Are the other, uh, HBC members that are on the phone following so far what we're talking about? Okay. Any other comments from HBC members?
I have two more, I'm sorry.
This is, this is your opportunity.
I don't know if we'll make it to another meeting. I'm just gonna stay now. Um, one was made to be A, um, A1. Timmy Calp got a lot of attention later in the standards about their importance to the appearance of the structure, particularly its architectural style. So I feel a little uncomfortable with those, with Timmy Calp's being a no COA. I think they should be minor. And it's just the Timmy Calp part, really. Slightly concerned about the other pieces, but Timmy Calp's, I think, is the most important. Um, and then HBC 11, C14, I think should be minor.
HBC 11, C14?
Yeah. So removing the two inaccessible buildings that have not reached the site, there too, if there's no COA, there is no proof of personal anybody to say this was or was not historic. At least if there's a minor, you can say, clearly this was built in 1972. And it's Masonite falling down and whatever else. But like, otherwise, people are just open to knock stuff down without any accountability. So we're gonna.
Move over a, um, non-original building, etc.
Somebody's gonna fire it.
Yeah. And these are HBC, I'm, I'm not speaking for everyone, but this is, these are recommendations that are coming from HBC. Any, um, any other?
What, what was that you said last, Jamie? You sounded a little powerful.
Oh, sorry, that, that these are recommendations from, from HBC in terms of changes.
Or that I'm gonna forward as recommendations for HBC's.
For, for consideration.
Okay. Is that Christina talking?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement. I've been listening, and I'm in agreement with what she was pointing out.
Okay. And I'm seeing, I'm seeing Wendy.
Uh-huh.
Wendy, shake her head too. Wendy, are you, are you able to say if you've got any other comments or concerns? Uh, you're on mute.
Oh, I'm, I'm not on mute.
No, Wendy? Wendy?
No, I'm in agreement as well.
Okay.
Uh, I have a question. Um, with these getting out there to the public, I mean, these are not, these are still our guidelines and things that we, we're gonna use as a tool to keep moving forward. Um, and I know I heard the guy said that we should review these annually. When's gonna be our time annually, you know, like, next March? You know, hey, in March, we're gonna review. And then we can, the HBC can say, you know what, here's what we need to tweak or not tweak based on the stuff, the work that you get going forward.
Uh, we're just trying, we're just talking about what may, what may make sense. And so, uh, it definitely can be, it definitely should be annually. And, and we're talking about whether or not it could be, you know, from the date of adoption that you could do an annual review, or if that kind of coincides with the term dates, with the terms. And in, at the end of June, you could talk about, you know, coinciding with that. Because it kind of makes sense, if new members are coming on board, they're not gonna be familiar at all with standards. Um, I mean, they may be, but they're not. You, you want the, you want the input of the members who are, have been on the committee and commission rather, you know, with, with using them to the full extent, in my thinking. So I would, I would tie it probably from, um, uh, you know, to, to the end of, um, uh, June, you know, the end of June would be that time period for the review. Like an annual report. I mean, we do an annual report every year to the state with discussion about your training sessions and what the HBC has done. Um, so it's, it's kind of, could coincide with that as well. Good question, Lori. Christina, do you?
We talk this to death. And, okay, it's good. Let's, nobody thinks even hardly seen it. So let's get it out there, let's get using it, and then let's figure out what's not working for us. And if there's a way that we can change it or not change it. I don't know. Does it make sense?
I think it does, yeah. So I guess what I'm hearing is there's some changes that, um, that HBC has recommended. You've got the process assessment document, you've got staff's recommendations as well. So, um, I think maybe you wanna just open it up, because the public is here, before you consider any kind of motion to move forward.
Sure. Anybody?
I think we said HBC.
It was good stuff. I just want to say I appreciate you guys. Like, it's very, very helpful and, you know, it is a community, you know, the passion I see is really great. And I'm so glad that there are people that are like, whoa, hey, you know, not many places have that. So, thank you for your knowledge and expertise.
Thanks for listening.
And I'll just ask if there's anybody on the calls, members of the public, um, who wants to also express any general comments, concerns? Feel free to raise your hand or dial a star.
I was just thinking, you must have this late.
I am not thinking anymore, it's too late.
Did we, um.
Okay, Vaughn, I see it has a hand raised. Go ahead, Vaughn. I'll unmute you. Star nine, star nine is what you need to dial.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I was just going to say it's very comprehensive. It's, I was surprised to see how well it was, but I'm happy with the, I think it's very, um, changed up, very user friendly. I have management look at it all the way on my own from the beginning to the end. Um, but it's come as soon as I think that it's a good guide for anyone newly, um, approaching the process. I have, again, I have looked at it, it's a very convenient, kind of a device. So our, who decided you don't, it will, um, help them raise the step on that. He, you and this for a third time, I am really glad that he's so, um, not being, um, intimidated by the size of the document, but he does not have any holding any issue with the process.
Okay, I, I'm not, thank you for your input, I'm not seeing any other hand raised, so.
Do we hear anything from Brian or us or Josh?
I haven't heard anything, I'm just following some other stuff, but.
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Well, no, did he do, he said one thing, did you get it? That thing wasn't.
It wasn't.
Oh, it wasn't?
It was.
I must have missed it, I'm sorry.
And again, I do want to thank you for this.
Oh, sure. Thank you, appreciate it, well, great input and also helps a lot.
I'm not that I said that, it was like super zero, you know, like you think that there's so much narrative, we didn't.
So we're not, we're not done yet, we have your motion and I would make a recommendation.
To move forward.
Yeah.
Okay. So I need a motion to move forward of the design standards?
Does, what does that mean in terms of the revision that we suggested versus the others that they suggested?
So I, I think that what we'll wind up doing is capturing, you know, staff's recommendations, changes that staff has had subsequent to the the draft. Changes that H P C has recommended as well, so we're going to have to capture both.
And it goes through.
They're going to go to, in a, and as well as, and include the recommendation from your process assessment document too. The recommendations from that. Um, and then your, your recommendation is going to move, the recommendations are going to move forward as a whole and a packet to the planning and zoning commission and city council.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah. Yeah, until before.
Apparently, yeah, we talked about that before because of the Zoom.
Okay. Do you have Keith on and Wendy and?
Although, of course, Keith's not, he can't.
Okay.
That'd be great to expand our budget.
So you want to have somebody make a motion?
Yeah, Keith with you.
I, I need a motion to move forward.
Wendy, I so moved.
Do I have a second?
So you're making a motion to move the the design standards with the recommendations and the process assessment report to the planning and zoning commission, is that what you're?
That is what I'm doing, I'm sorry. Okay, so Wendy's made the motion and Lori, did you second?
I did second.
Okay, Jamie, can we do a roll?
Sure. Uh, Cheryl Lewis?
Yes.
Um, Christina Mike?
Yes.
Wendy, guys?
Yes.
And Lori, Ryan?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent, thank you, everyone. Thank you very much. And, um, is there a motion to turn?
Yes, did anybody, did it want to?
All.
And all in favor?